Again, welcome to the Village Committee of the Whole Meeting for January 7th, 2014. I call this meeting to order and the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's.
Here.
Cameron.
Here.
Carbonaro.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ranky.
Present.
Shipman.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. Before we get into the planning and zoning, I have a notice here to read. The village has adopted certain rules of decorum for board meetings by ordinance, including procedures for its committee of the whole meetings. Those rules provide that during committee of the whole meetings, only matters on the agenda for that meeting will be discussed and members from the public will be given an opportunity to be heard on each committee of the whole agenda item, only after a presentation of the matter by village staff and/or applicable petitioner and its consultants. And after the board has had a chance to discuss the matter among themselves, this evening the board will take up recommendations from the Bartlett Economic Development Commission, known as EDC for short. The EDC recommendations and then minutes of its four meetings are quite extensive and are not expected to be concluded this evening, so the discussion of the EDC recommendations will likely be continued and further discussed at one or more of the future committee of the whole meetings. And after reading them, I'm sure it'll be more than that. According to matter of EDC recommendations will not be opened up for public -- accordingly, the matter for the EDC recommendations will not be opened up for public comments this evening. Comments from the public, including members of the EDC who may be in attendance at these committee of the whole meetings, where EDC recommendations are presented and discussed, will not take place until the board has had an opportunity to completely complete its review and fully discuss EDC recommendations among themselves. We thank you for coming, and if the reason you are here this evening is for presentation and discussion of the EDC recommendations, then we thank you in advance for your patience in waiting to be heard on this topic. If you cannot attend a future date, you are welcome to submit your comments in writing. EDC recommendations will take place under the planning and zoning committee, which is chaired by trustee Cameron. Moving right along, the one and only item on our agenda for committee of the whole is under planning and zoning. Chairman Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning and zoning committee has three items this evening. The first is the zoning ordinance amendment, impervious surface standards. The second is the video gaming regulation. And the third is the presentation of the Bartlett Economic Development Commission recommendations, of which I would ask the staff to summarize the EDC report and recommendations, unless we'd like to start with one of the other ones first.
You can go in order if you want.
Impervious, impervious surfaces it is.
I put that up, just going in this order, I can gladly reverse it, but if you want to go, I can give impervious surface a quick --
Start with number one. That sounds good.
All right. This is the second time you've seen the proposed amendment for the chapter five of the zoning ordinance regarding impervious surface. Prior to the first time you saw it, you requested that the staff do some initial, an analysis of how many lots we think would be over or close to the impervious surface requirements that we are proposing for the zoning board of appeals for their public hearing. We did that. We looked at our air photos and some other information we've received and have on hand. We believe there's about 211 lots that would be affected by this in terms of exceeding the standards we are proposing. Most of them tend to be in the north end of town. We provided that information to the zoning board of appeals, along with our analysis and our examples. I won't go through all the examples, but essentially, we've, we've given percentages for lots greater than 20,000 square feet, which tend to be in our ER3, ER2 district. We're going to a 30% impervious surface. This one I have up is approximately at 30%, so this is what we would try to achieve. With all those lots of that size, again, going to similar for the less than 20,000 square feet, we're going to 35%. And less than 10,800 square feet, and we're going to 40%. Let me just pull one up there. This is a 40% lot allowed, and this lot's at 35%, so there's a little bit of wiggle room, but generally, we're looking for this type of relation between impervious and non-impervious surface. And for duplex lots, we're allowed going up to 45%. And I just have a quick example of a duplex lot. This is a duplex lot. This one's at 40%. The maximum allowed would be 45%. The zoning board of appeals took all this information and your comments, the information regarding how many lots we believe will be affected by it or exceed the standard. The minutes are in front of you, and they recommended that the village board proceed with adopting these impervious surface standards. Do you have any questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
Actually, I do, Jim. When I was reading through the notes, there seemed to be some discrepancy on variances. And you were asked directly these questions in the past notes, and it seemed like one time you said there would be, the people have the ability to have variances, and then another time you said they wouldn't, as I looked through the notes. And so, I'm kind of curious about that. I mean, will the people be able to come before the board and ask for variances on the percentages?
Yes, they, they would be able to ask for variances, and I think, and I was going to the point of trying to make the point that a new standard and asking for variance right off the bat could be difficult to achieve, but they do get an opportunity to ask for variance, as, as any solution to any zoning regulation is, is allowed, so.
All right. And what I could also gather, it's a relatively small complaint within the village. Five to 10% of the people, five to 10 complaints per year is what it boiled down to. Is that correct?
In terms of drainage complaints?
Concerns of drainage on this issue.
Um, I think we get a lot of drainage complaints. I don't know if we ever put any numbers on the percentage overall. The, these were, the percentage that we gave here were the lots that we believe would be affected immediately, and that was a 2%. We get a lot of drainage complaints. Now, whether or not it's due to impervious surface or, or other types of drainage patterns or the way the lot rolls, I, you know, I don't have the answer to that.
Well, I guess what I'm making reference to, it says here, "Staff estimates that the village receives approximately 100 drainage complaints annually, and approximately 5% to 10% of them are directly related to impervious surfaces." That's what I'm getting at.
Okay. Then.
And so, with that being said, one of the former trustees made a comment that I'm kind of curious about, and he had mentioned that it appears to lead to abundance of regulation, which may not be necessary. And that concerns me, that as a village, we're over-regulating things for a small amount of people that are actually having complaints. You see where I'm going with this? You understand what I'm saying?
I do see that. I would answer that we're one of the few towns that don't have an impervious surface standard. Most of the towns around here, particularly the ones that have started out with a, an older core and then expanded, have impervious surface standards for, just for the reason that you don't have the, the more modern developments who have detention areas and the drainage swales and those types of things in them. In the older parts of town, you control it by controlling the impervious surface. I don't believe it's an over-regulation. I think it's a regulation that we're, is long overdue, actually, in the village.
The only comment I had is, just from reading the extensive notes, this has been going on for a long time, obviously.
Yes.
2008. A lot of very good points made in, by past trustees, and talking about this for so long, other than the obvious, Chairman, or trustee Cameron mentioned, the restriction on a person's right to improve his property however he wants. Other than that, what is the main reason that this has been held up for so long?
I, I think it was a combination of a couple of things. Initially, we started out with a consultant to help us rewrite the zoning ordinance, and that went by the wayside as we went through some budget cuts, so we've been doing a lot of it in-house. And we've been doing it chapter by chapter, and it, quite frankly, takes a lot of time to write a zoning ordinance in-house and review it with everybody when you're got your other duties to do, so. But this one came about primarily because we're at chapter five, but we wanted to segment this out because we've spent a lot of time and effort in terms of doing improvements to our stormwater system in the older parts of town. We've, we've done some work with Streamwood. We've recently got that grant that FEMA, FEMA gave us, and so, we wanted to make sure that we would have at least this portion in place. The rest of chapter five, which you will see, has about 90 pages of revised regulations, but we wanted to segment this out.
I guess my major concern is that we're just over-regulating to the, to the public. I mean, that's, here again, I can read another comment from a trustee in the past. He said he can understand drainage being an issue and the impact of it may have on another household, but five to 10 problems a year isn't convincing that a village should regulate to this extent. So, I mean, I just go back and I read a lot of the past trustees that had some real issues with just the over-regulation of things.
I, I saw that in there, but I don't, I think we get a lot of drainage complaints. I don't deal with them personally because we use our, our building director and our village engineer and their staff go out, but whenever it rains in the spring and when, when this snow all melts and it starts getting kind of mushy out there, we'll get a lot of complaints. And again, I can't relate them all to impervious surface, but what, what this does, this is not an ordinance that tomorrow is going to, gonna change things. This is gonna be gradual over time. As you see lots that are what I would call over-built and, and impact their neighbors now, when, when somebody like that wants to come in and continue, you know, paving their, their lot, and I can think of a few that I've been on that have been very problematic. It'll take care, it'll, it'll reduce that ability to further impact their neighbors.
Jim, I'm sorry. May I ask something?
No, go ahead.
Jim, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
What's the downside to not doing this? Could people just go about willy-nilly and go ahead and build whatever they want and pave whatever they want, and we'd have no control over it at that point?
Yes.
Well, there's an --
And that then could create clearly some issues.
You could further impact neighbors on, from, from that type of situation with drainage problems.
And as I recall, there was an issue before us a couple of months ago where a person wanted to add on to his house because his ailing mother-in-law was moving in, and we denied him permission largely on the basis that there was going to be too much impervious surface. Is that correct?
Yes, that was on a very small lot.
But they, by, by adding that, they would, there would have been not enough ground, not enough grass left, excuse my naive comments.
Right.
Not enough grass left to soak up the rainwater that was coming and potentially create runoff and drainage issues for him and his neighbors.
That, that was a potential, yes.
And so, that's why your recommendation is that we move forward with something like this, because we want to try to control it. It's not a matter of over-regulating, it's a matter of what's in the best interest of everyone, including the neighbors and the residents and everybody else.
That's my, our intent, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
But even then, we still have control over. People just can't come in and just build whatever they want, so to speak.
Well, we still have building permits.
Without going, getting approval and, and, you know, they're not gonna put an addition on their house without coming to the planning.
They don't need a variation. They can't. I mean, they need a building permit, but we couldn't deny the building permit. If you don't have a regulation that says if you exceed this, could a person --
We'd have to issue it. Could a person hypothetically come, if there's no regulation, could a person hypothetically come and pave their entire lot in concrete?
Yes.
As long as it's within the, not in the side yards, front yards, et cetera, they could. They could. And the building department could not say no, unless there's a regulation like this.
Well, here again, I, I don't want to belabor this whole point, but I have some issue with just the village turning around and saying, "Well, you, you've got to take something away, and, and we want you to use this type of material to replace it." We talked about the different sorts of paver bricks that we wouldn't just be able to use regular paver bricks. They have to be a special type of paver bricks, and I don't know what that costs people. I don't know if there's going to be more involved cost for someone to change that and have the, have something that's more, not impervious. I just get concerned about what people are going to say when they turn around and say, "Well, now this costs me a lot of money to do this, and, and I've got to use materials. The village is telling me I have to use these materials." Here again, I'm just trying to keep us out of a position where the village comes across as being overbearing and, and telling people that this is the way we have to do things.
And I totally agree with you, because the ones that are going to be problems, they're gonna complain and gripe, because we hear it all the time on regulations that are existing. Variances, side yards, why can't I build two, one foot to my neighbor's property line, and why do I have to be five feet away? You know, we, it happens on any kind of zoning regulation. This will be another one, but this one, I believe, is important, particularly in the older parts of town, where we've had some, some flooding issues.
Are most the, the 211 in the older parts of town, or some are out west, too?
They're, they're scattered throughout the town, but if you, the majority of them are in the northern part of town, in the older parts of town.
And the ones that are, the 211, when you say most of them are under 5% over, or they're 10, 15?
I didn't know, I didn't think we did that in-depth of analysis.
Okay.
We took anything that was over the percentage that we were going to allocate for those lots, so it could be, you know, from 1% over to 15% over. We didn't further quantify it.
And if they were over, they got on the list?
They got over, they were on the list, basically.
But to put a finer, slightly finer point on that question, then, those 211 lots, they're legal non-conformities. Passing this regulation will not force these people to tear up their driveways or decks or make any changes on their property. It only apply prospectively to prevent people from paving their entire lot. Is that, is that accurate?
That's correct.
But if they want to do anything else, then they have to --
They wanted to change it, then they have to come.
Change something. Okay.
And I think I read in there also that things like decks and above-ground pools and water can seep under them, those aren't inclusive in this?
A deck that has, it's above-ground and it has the ability to allow the penetration of the water does not count.
And what about above --
Above-ground pool would count.
Would it?
Yes.
Depends on how.
Unless maybe you left it empty. Fuck the world.
Hey, then it's actually beneficial, right? And it's been, if you left your pool empty the whole year round, it'd probably be better on them.
We get all our drinking water from here.
Pools would count.
You know, I think drainage is a big concern in this town. It sounds like, you know, maybe if we've only had 5%, 10% of concerns of coverage, lot coverage or drainage concerns, I think that's, that percentage is very, very low. I do believe a lot of the problems are because of the, the coverage area, hard coverage area that's running off into there. If we can save 5% to 10%, how much smaller of a detention pond would we have to be putting in today of what we're planning to build today? And I think any type of a small improvement that we can do today for the future drainage, for the future of this, of the town, I think it might sound like a small amount, but if you add 5% on every lot, it's a big number. And with all the drainage concerns that we have gone through in the past, you know, seven to 10 years, I do believe that, you know, my question has always had, is if we would have had this done before, would we still have those same concerns? We can't project that, but I think any improvements and anything that we can do to eliminate as much ground to absorb the moisture and not having it to run off is helping the whole entire community, not just one lot or the neighbor's lot. It'll help the whole community with our drainage.
Hey, that's a great point.
Okay, I have nothing else on this. I guess at that point in time, we've --
This would get, if you want to move it on to the village board for a final vote, that's what we're asking for at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing we have, and I think we want to progress on to the video gaming regulations. Do you have information on that as well, or not?
I'm gonna let Mr. Maraz, our village attorney, handle that, since he's been doing most of the research.
I'll make it short.
He's been busy. Looks like he answered that unanswerable question that the previous board had.
Here.
The board knows this has been a concern. The board has expressed its frustration with the perception and, in some part, reality that we're getting a lot of these video gaming establishments petitioning to come in, and it's not the original intent or what was perceived, that it would be just helping existing businesses. And, for instance, President Wallace asked if we could increase the fee. He looked at what some other town were charging. Trustees Cameron and Ranky asked about additional zoning regulation. And we, trustee Cameron said, you know, something along the lines of how we were handling the cannabis situation, isn't there some way we could do something with zoning with respect to that? Staff has raised issues about setting maximum square footages or minimum square footages and the like. And so, we took a look at several options that I discussed in this memo to make it more restrictive in terms of the ability to get a video gaming license. And so, we just sort of summarized some of the options that are discussed here. And the first was raising the fee. It wouldn't be a raising of the fee, per se, looking at, I wrote a memo some time ago about could we set it higher? And again, you know, remember that I'd said, this is the new law, and there's some of these issues of concurrent jurisdiction with the state. But we get into, if you're non-home rule, the maximum fee was $25. So, we kept ours pretty low. And again, it's part of the philosophy of inviting, of originally trying to help existing businesses. But if you treat it differently and look at it from a perspective of can we tax it? You, as a home rule municipality, have the ability to levy a tax. It has to be, meet constitutional requirement, but when other towns have tried to raise higher fees and they impose a tax on a per-terminal basis, on an annual basis, we've looked at some towns that charge as high as $500 per year, per terminal. Is that gonna dissuade some of the, what you're not looking for? I don't know. I can't say that, but you could raise it. It would raise revenue. I don't know that it would keep out the, you know, some of the new ones from coming in. It would have to be applied uniformly to towns already, I mean, liquor licensees already existing, as well as new licensees, but it, it may have that effect. So, that's one option that could be looked at. The other was currently, you have to get a special use to sell liquor in almost every commercial district that we have. If a business already has a, is already selling liquor, it usually runs to that property rather than the business. So, an existing business that has a liquor license would have had, likely, has a special use to sell liquor. But that, as we saw when we looked at some of the existing, like across the street, when a new establishment was coming in, there was some frustration on the plan commission's part that, that they're looking at a, it's really, should we issue a special use for liquor in a business district? And it wasn't really looking at the issue of video gaming and the surrounding uses. I think trustee Ranky raised that point in particular across the street and the town center relative to the issue of residential above commercial and some other things. So, one thing that could be done would be to also make it a special, get a special use permit for video gaming, not just liquor, but an additional special use for video gaming. So, you control it somewhat within your zoning ordinance. They've also looked at setting minimum square footage and limiting the video gaming requirements, basically, to restaurants. So, these are examples. I'm not saying that these are the numbers necessarily that you would set it at, but one would be to only allow it in facilities over a certain size, so for example, over 2,000 square feet. In the past, I've heard different comments where feeling it wasn't as big a problem if it was in a bigger facility as opposed to a smaller one where the whole thing is pretty much video gaming only. The other is possibly restricting it to sit-down restaurants with commercial-grade kitchens. There was concern that, you know, you had a facility that was on, the food was, might be, I use an example, cheese sticks that were either made in the microwave or toaster oven and prepared off-site. You had one employee cooking the food, seating the, serving the alcohol, keeping an eye on the video gaming, et cetera. So, one restriction may be along those lines, so they're more restaurant than bar. A third option may be that they need a dining room, because one of the things we saw is you might have, you know, five video gaming machines in a small facility, you know, in the shopping center with a small space and, you know, two or three tables and, and middle, minimum number of chairs, perhaps. There should be in the building as opposed to necessarily the bar area, but that they at least have to have a dining room with 50 seats or some number that the board sets. I think those may be things that, if, if we're going to have it, that, that it's less intrusive and maybe more palatable and, and would also have the effect of reducing the numbers. Finally, an option that I think is a little risky, but possibility is, there are towns that require a separate liquor license for video gaming. So, let's say they have a Class B. They would also need a Class B VG, like a supplemental liquor license, and you limit the number of those. If you set that limit too low, I think, you know, you're asking for a suit. So, I think that's almost semantics and may not be worth the risk, but I throw it out there, because if you're looking, there are towns that try and do that, but the trick would be in setting what that number would be. And then, I raised the thorny issue with any of these type of regulations of vested rights, and we've got various businesses at various stages of this permitting process in the application phase, where they've gone through everything with us, but they're in a holding pattern with the state. So, if, we've got people just getting started, applying for business. We've got people who've gone through, have a liquor license, have a special use for liquor, have signed a lease with the landlord, have already put improvements in the facility, and they're just waiting on the state. Once they get their state license, the rest falls in place. Well, those individuals, the further along the spectrum they are, they may have certain vested rights. And so, we've got different businesses at different levels there, and most of the vested rights case or zoning cases, there's not any yet, at least at the developed level, dealing with video gaming. But those cases, I think by analogy, may be applicable, and so, we can come up with some regulations. The question would be, well, how do those new regulations affect some of our current businesses that have made investments and things? So, the idea of vested rights is, you had a law, they looked at it, they relied on it, they spent money in reliance on that law, and now you change the rules on them? You know, you have to look at those things. So, and I, and I think to just say it's, you're only vested if you already have the liquor license, I think that, that's a little harsh, and so, there'd have to be something different. So, if we're gonna go forward with some of those different options that, that -- So if we're going to go forward with some of those different options that, that are suggested there, some of them take time. We could factor in different starting points to take into account that some people could be written in. So for instance, on, you would have some that are, if someone already has, for instance, video gaming and they wouldn't meet the seating requirements or the square footage requirements, I would argue that those people are legal non-conforming uses or structures. And they would get, they would, they were here first, they got it, they spent the money, they would have, continue to have their video gaming license. We're not talking about taking it away from existing licensees. But what we're talking about is curtailing it in the future, so there aren't that many more. Now, I don't know what point the market gets saturated and the, and the market takes care of it itself. So we have, I mean, don't forget, we started with, where I said that, you know, they have to go through, they have to jump through three hoops, even with our current strategy. We added the ordinance to close the loophole. But, you know, even going back to day one, they're going to need a special use for liquor. They're going to need you to create a liquor license, and I'm talking new businesses. And then the mayor has to issue those licenses. Are those foolproof? And can you just say no in all instances? No. There are some protections that any licensee has going through that. So if you want to make it more stringent or more difficult and try and address what the board has expressed as a concern that we don't turn into a mini Las Vegas, here are some ideas and some ways to make it more stringent and more difficult. So, you know, we can come up with an ordinance that would implement all of those or any of those or...
Question. If we grandfather someone in and then we do square footage and they decide to sell, does that negate the machines to the new owner or would that grandfather carry on?
Good question. The, some of them, so for instance, if it was a special use for the facility, I would say that they're grandfathered in if you make video gaming a special use. If you increase the fees, they'd have to pay the new fees. In terms of the square footage, there's an argument that the new business would not be entitled to. That could probably be an exception written into the rule. But if a business is sold, the liquor license is not transferable. So technically, that license doesn't follow. So arguably, they're starting over. And when it's sold, a business that has video gaming arguably, and I would say video gaming licenses are not transferable either. So in that instance, unless we were carving out an exception, I would say that they would not be transferable.
And I would guess that part of the valuation of the company was based on the video game.
Right. I, I, I would guarantee it. So that may be one that would be harsh and that we could write in an exception.
Yeah, I think you'd have to write in an exception in that situation.
Now, and that, I have eight different categories in here where I tried to tie it into where I thought some of the businesses were in the various range of, along in the process. And that would be a ninth one. And I'm sure there could be...
Yes, you have seven.
Okay. I was thinking of an eight. Okay.
Now you have eight.
Okay.
If I may, Brian.
Yes.
Once again, narrowing down this to a simple English. The vested rights essentially says, once the ball's rolling, it's hard to stop.
Yes.
Okay. Based on reading your memorandum several times, it seems to me that primarily the special use permit seems to do what I think we had talked about, which was kind of drawing that bright line and say, okay, going forward. Because what we have now, we can't, we can't, nor do we have any intention of removing.
Let me just, if I may interrupt just a second on that, just to make a point. I had the seven categories. One was future restaurant and/or bar businesses. Well, those people have no vested rights, even though we have allowed, right?
Right.
So depending on where...
That ball hasn't started rolling yet. I guess my...
Oh, okay. Then using your language or analysis, you're right.
My, once, once the ball is rolling, once they've started to push the ball, it's hard to stop.
It's just spending some money.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Once they fill an application, once they've kind of...
Yes.
Put their foot into the game.
That's a good way of putting it.
But the special use seems to do what I think is the emotion of this board and what we want to accomplish moving forward, which is to keep some kind of local control on the number and type of establishments that are allowed video gaming. It doesn't go backwards and place any undue burden on any of our current establishments or any of them that are, any of the balls that are already rolling.
We can write that in.
Yeah. This kind of seems to, right. In other words, everybody who is kind of there now is, I'm guessing you could say is kind of granted this special use. But moving forward, anybody who wants to open a business in town and apply, and has applied for a liquor license, we've already said, in the liquor license now. You have to tell us if your intention is sometime in the next however many years to get video gaming. Well, now they're also going to have to get this special use. So that seems to kind of put a lot of steps in place that, not to make it cumbersome, but to give us some local control over, over something that I think we found out almost by accident was nearly automatic.
Right.
So that's just kind of my opinion on what we've seen. I'm not saying we shouldn't do any of these other ones, but that one to me seems like that, that kind of broadly covers many of the things that we did. I'm personally not real comfortable with increasing the per machine fees, only because it's going to affect our current licensee holders, some of whom are small businesses and, and 500 bucks per machine could be a pretty significant fee for them. I'm not going to live or die by that, but I do think that's probably not a great idea. The square footage and the commercial hood and all the rest of that, I'd like to hear more about it, but that's, that's kind of my thoughts.
I would just, that's a good point. I just have to refresh everyone's memory on having a special use permit and how much that discretion that gives you. It's an extra bite at the apple. I don't know if it accomplishes standing by itself all that you're looking for because there's case law and it's the city of Chicago Heights versus Living Word Outreach Full Gospel Church and Ministries case where our Supreme Court of Illinois said a special use is tantamount to a permitted use unless you can show some extra harm or hardship different than every other place. If it were challenged on that basis, a special use permit standing alone might be difficult. Now, I will tell you, in that case, it was sort of zoning restrictions for a church in a, in a commercial area. And I would argue if someone raised that, that liquor's a different animal.
Absolutely.
And, and so you have that, but there isn't, you know, it is out there. And I think it's a good thing to, to add, but I don't want you to think it's...
No, it's not a penalty.
All and end all, but it is one of the steps here, I think that would be a good...
But I think it's consistent with our intent, the recognition that, you know, and with all due respect, but a bistro, a video gaming bistro is a different use than, you know, Nicotino or...
Sports bar.
Yeah, sports bar. It's fundamentally from a zoning perspective. You know, we're not, we're not picking on these establishments. We're recognizing that they're different. And, and in that difference, we're saying, okay, you're, these uses are appropriate for some zoning districts, but maybe not others. And then perhaps we place additional restrictions on that particular zoning use. So for example, we don't, we don't think it's appropriate to have the video gaming bistro within 1,000 feet of residential areas. I mean, then that, we, we kind of saw some of that with the Maxine's discussion, or not Maxine's, I'm sorry, with Elsie's, with Elsie's, because we had people come here and complain about that. So I think there are restrictions we can put on the special use that make a lot of sense and, and convey our intent, not, not to penalize anybody, but to put these things in the right place.
Can you refresh how many, how many we have? I don't have that sheet. How many we have and how many have applied and are waiting?
We have six businesses that have been approved by the state that are operating. We have two that have been approved by the state that are not operating yet. And we have four that are in the pipeline and have started the process with the state.
And how many machines do we have total? Do you know? With the six that are operate? And how many that have been approved, the two? How many machines are they putting in there if they get approved?
We currently have 17 operating machines in the village. Two of the ones that are, aren't operating yet are Stella's and Betty's. And one could assume that they would each have five machines, which would bring the total to 27.
And do we know how many the four want? Or do they all want five each?
Uh, we, we don't know that information at this moment.
Okay. Are any of those four under 2,000 square feet? Do we know?
The four currently, I would say, I would say they, they are.
All, all four of them?
Um, one location is Papa Pacino's, the other is Tokyo Steakhouse, and the other one is the former Sheep and Fiddle. I guess I'd have to...
Yeah, that's all. Sheep and Fiddle is, that's, that's big. So two.
With the kitchen Papa Pacino, I would guess.
Yeah. All actually have real kitchens?
I guess my, my opinion on this would be to ask a few questions. Somewhat disagree with some of the comments about not increasing the fee at all. I think that, I think that we're underestimating the amount of time that staff could potentially spend on this issue down the road. And I think it's something that I would strongly support increasing not to 500. I think I like their opinion here of bumping it to at least 100 bucks a terminal. Secondly, I would ask Mr. Maraz, which of these suggestions, and very well laid out, I might add, are the most viable for future manipulation? Because I have a hard time trying to put a square footage number on something. That, that would be difficult, I think. Because I think you'd be toying with that all down the road.
You mean manipulate by a potential applicant to, so...
Yeah.
Some of those are economic in the sense of square footage, 2,000 is usually more than one unit in a strip mall. So that was a little bit an example by design. It's going to be probably one and a half spaces at least. So, you know, those under the heading of setting a minimum square footage and limiting video gaming to restaurants, those require a pretty substantial investment. So, you know, when you say manipulate, they can get around it by spending the money, but they now have a significant investment and it's not the, maybe what I get that you didn't like. And the reason we came up with those is it kind of gets rid of the cheese sticks or...
I think that's...
No offense intended, but...
Yeah.
Benini type.
Do we know any other towns that have a square footage?
Uh, there were some that had different, different square footages. I can't, I don't recall specifically.
There are towns that have, when we did the research.
I, I believe Hanover Park, if I'm not mistaken, had 2,000.
Hanover was one of them.
Do you know what Hanover Park has?
I think it was, it was 2,500 square foot and the 50 seats, if I recall that.
That's for five machines though, right? 2,500?
They would get the full complement.
Okay.
But how many places are that big with 50 seats?
Yeah.
You know, there's restaurants.
Well, the problem with the, with the seating, I think you might be right, Mayor, that that one's problematic, is if we have any existing licenses now that aren't going to meet that and they change ownership and it all starts over, they're not going to be able to have the machines where they had them before.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's problematic to think about the existing ones.
Yes. The seats would be one.
And, and I think, just looking down the road, you would, you would have people coming in that are 1,900 square feet asking for variances. You'd have people coming in that are 2,400 square feet, that's the only space I could find. They're finding, I just think that...
I'm trying to give you an easy no.
Yeah, I like the commercial kitchen idea. I think that, that, that actually answers a lot of our concerns about making sure that they...
It's not an answer.
There's a big investment in it, not to say there isn't in every one of these, I'm sure there is, but it's much, much harder to walk away from that kind of a setup than, than something else.
A little more skin in the game.
That could require that they actually use the kitchen?
That'd be tough.
That's my point.
No, it's more, it's, you know...
I know, I know.
If they're really good, I mean, if they make as much money as projected, maybe it's worth putting in a kitchen, even if you don't really use it. But I don't know. It's an investment.
You have heard of commercial kitchens, so...
Maybe we can try to...
That's my point.
Maybe we can try to do this by the process of elimination. I think the B-B-G liquor license is out. Does anybody have any issues with dropping that? From what I was reading that Mr. Maraz put together, that sounds like a lawsuit waiting to happen, trying to issue another B-B-G liquor license. So the, I think everybody understands the vested rights. We have some that are in process right now, shouldn't be a problem.
I'd leave that alone.
I think the lowest hanging fruit and the, some of the control would fall under adding video game as a special use. And the planning commission seems to like that as well, right? The zoning, I think that could be able to be adjusted.
I like some, I like minimal square footage personally. I mean, that, that way they're not just, you know, buying the smallest lot over here and putting five machines in.
I tend to agree. I think that the square footage would solve the problem of the gaming being an ancillary thing. I mean, we want the gaming to be an ancillary thing to something else, a restaurant, a sports bar, or something else. And if they had the square footage requirement, minimums, then they could come in and say, well, we're going to have the machines, but we're also doing something else for the community other than just bringing in gaming.
I would, I would agree with the mayor on what he said of, what I interpreted what he said on this was that number one, if we stick to a specific square footage, we're going to have people asking for variances. And I think the other downside to this specific square footage is, we do have some businesses in town that clearly have less than 2,000 square feet that now have video gaming. And as we mentioned, that's a part of their business appeal. If, if the person wants to retire or sell their business or something like that, they could say, hey, I've got this little tavern, a little kitchen or whatever. And, you know, by the way, I've got three, five video games that, you know, make this much money. And if they sell it, they're no longer conforming and we probably would not be able to fix that.
No, he, he didn't say that. He said we could actually put it in there.
I believe that's what Brian did say.
We could as long as they apply and...
Craig, please don't put words in his mouth. What did, what did you say?
Well, that was trustee Martin's question. And I said there may be a way, I haven't figured it out yet, but there may be a way to carve out an exception for, along the lines of a, of a facility that already has video gaming, maybe that square footage runs to the facility as, like a special use runs to the facility as opposed to the business. So it's kind of grandfathered in to the facility. And it's, you know, this is a race to the, not a race to the courthouse, but a race to apply. And so if they've already, are somewhere in this process, and let's say it's somewhere like Brock's Place, that's small and has it, maybe that, they're always exempt. Brock's, for instance, is exempt from the 2,000 square foot, which gets you out of the problem of how does that person ever sell their business and move on? So that something like that is built in on a property basis, so to speak, if they already have it. You know, you've set a date and wherever they are on that date, they could be grandfathered in or non-conforming, if you will. As a, you know, I did say also, you're right, that, you know, you could make the argument that it's not transferable. So my first answer was yes. I, I think in that example, you could say, no, too bad. But I think there's a, there may be a way around that hardship that you're, seem to be concerned with, and it's a legitimate concern.
I think it's a huge concern.
Yeah. I, I think we could solve it, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Haven't figured it out exactly yet, but I think it's doable.
Not to digress, but if we... Not to digress, but if we add a video gaming special use option, aren't, isn't in some way all of these items kind of underneath that? Because you're, you're adding more discretion to the ability to, for them to come in. I mean, literally you could say, "Okay, we have a special use permit process that you have to go through," and they would be monitoring this, you know, this, "That's too small," or "That's above a residential," or "They're below a residential," or...
I, I think we're not...
It keeps it broader and not so, "Okay, this size isn't good, this size is."
I think standing alone, it may not be good enough. I think you have more teeth in regulation that would have some objective, you know, number as opposed to just a general, your general, you know, special use requirement. I think it would not be bad. And again, there's different philosophies on the board. Some want more restrictions and others don't, and some are looking at, you know, sort of the fairness and how is this gonna work? And I appreciate that, but if we're trying to make it more restrictive and have fewer, drawing some lines would be a way to do it. Just relying on special use and the general special use standards, I don't think, you know, is gonna solve that where you just, anytime you can just willy-nilly set conditions, I think it, it may not be enough in a future challenge. I think it's not bad.
It's a combination of...
I think a combination. You guys tell me which one.
Some kind of a square footage type deal. If we were gonna do square footage, I would, I would suggest that we consider a per machine square footage, because you may find someplace that opens up a little tap in a small location that has fifteen hundred square feet and, you know, one machine.
That's fine.
That's, I agree.
That's what I had in mind.
Five hundred square feet per machine, something of that nature.
Is it the maximum of five per establishment, is that the...
Yes, yes, under the current law.
You could put some kind of percentage in there for...
With a minimum of twelve hundred square feet or something.
I was thinking four hundred, but that's two thousand square feet, that's...
That'd be twenty-five hundred. I think you need some combination, 'cause you don't want a, a machine and a five hundred square...
Right, you'd have a minimum square footage.
Right, you'd have to have a combo.
And, and some formula that says, "Okay, if you have..."
Right.
"...thousand square feet, you know, you still have to have..."
Right.
This may be getting way ahead of the story, but how proactive should we be thinking? When this all came into being, it was because the board wanted to help existing businesses with ancillary machines, which is great. And then we weren't thinking about the possibilities of actually independent businesses coming in that wanted to just have gaming and no ancillary, and that wasn't, that was their main thing, it wasn't ancillary service.
Right.
So now, my question becomes to the future. What kind of control do we have when things change? When the state says, as I've said in the past, "Five machines are okay, you can have ten." Do we have any control over that? Is that all the thing?
I think that, I think right where you're going with...
Minimum per...
Minimum square foot per building and also a combination of, and then not more than, you know, so many machines per square foot, that would be a way of doing that.
Because if we make our reference, if we make a reference to having Bartlett is a little Las Vegas, potentially that could happen, you know, in, in theory, if, if the state was to become very lenient and liberal in what their gaming laws allowed these facilities to do.
Assuming we can do all these things, and I think we can under, you know, zoning, some zoning control that we're talking about with the special use, but, you know, I think some of these restrictions on square footage, maybe the commercial kitchen type of thing, get you to where you, we argue that we have that authority. Those are things that we control. We're not saying what the state will do, even if they in theory can get ten. We're saying, you know, we've set this level here, if you don't meet that, maybe in our town you can only get four, depending on the size of your establishment, even though the state might allow ten. At some point, someone may challenge that, but, you know, if you don't try to it, you don't have that argument.
Right, that's a good idea.
How, how big is Bannerman's, may I ask?
About ten thousand.
Twelve thousand.
It's very big.
How about the Maxines and...
Maxines, I believe are twelve hundred, Gary?
No, it's twenty-five hundred.
It was over two thousand, I remember.
That's over two thousand.
Elske's was about twelve hundred. Twelve hundred is about a standard, single...
Single, yeah.
Single shot.
Okay, so that could be a good reference.
Well, I remember asking them if they couldn't put all five, did they still wanna come? So, I mean, twelve, that's, yeah. So, is there, are there any other questions before we move on here?
We gotta give some directive here.
I need a little direction.
Yeah, let me make a suggestion. I think we should move ahead if it's all right with the board. With most of the items on here, we'll, you know, have some further discussion about the fees, but clearly the board thinks an additional special use level is important. I think that having a minimum, or a minimum square foot is okay, Brian, if you say that you think that for an existing building there can be some kind of variance. I think that was everybody's concern with that. So assuming that that's the case, Brian, we could go ahead and draft ordinances that provide that. I think that you've raised a good point, Trustee Camera, relative to putting in square footage relative to machines itself, so that we don't face that issue in the future of the state coming along and saying ten machines are good. And maybe we would want to put in there then the ordinance I'm sort of thinking we would put together, we would have that as well, but certainly include the commercial kitchen portion, 'cause I think that gets at limiting the kinds of establishments that are coming in just to be gambling establishments. If we put all those together, I think that does it, is that correct?
I think so. We, he hadn't finally a decision on fees, it sounds like we're taking out the seating requirement, and there's a little direction on fees.
Do you guys have any meanings one way or the other?
If we raise it by seventy-five dollars, then that's another two thousand...
Well, right now it's a one-shot fee. What we're talking about here is the tax per terminal.
A yearly?
So if you, the mayor said, "What about hundred per machine per year?" And that could be...
I said five hundred, but...
I know, I know.
I got overruled.
But, no, compromise are where you said you could live with, I think was a hundred per terminal.
Let's see the comment I had on the last, "Compromise?", question mark? I, I just think that, that's my opinion. I think that if we're gonna draft anything, I think that there should be some ongoing per terminal fee each year. I don't think this is the end of the discussions, and I don't think it's the end of the staff time on this issue down the road. I understand we're getting compensated, it looked like three thousand dollars last month on, I know Jeff isn't here, but I read it, and there's like...
Thirty-six hundred.
Thirty-six hundred dollars last month in the taxes. So that's, I did the math, I think it's somewhere around two hundred dollars a machine that we have existing, or something like that, so...
And then we also wanna do the, whoever's grandfathered in, that would be transferable as long as they...
Yes.
So it wouldn't be a burden when they went to sell? Is anyone opposed to that?
And I'm flexible with the additional, he calls it tax, I call it a fee for...
Right.
Burden fee.
You know, I said what I said. There was a method madness.
Brian called it tax, I have a hard time swallowing that.
Well, I want, yeah.
It's a fee for...
That's what Hannover does, where they're charging it's a tax on a, that's how you do it on a per machine basis.
They charge five hundred?
Yes.
Anyone else in the area charge five?
I see the headline in the paper tomorrow.
Yes. Obviously they're getting it.
I don't know about the grandfathering thing though, 'cause if they're gonna come into town, they just go through the process like everybody else, so I don't know.
I don't, are you talking about just the fee?
No, just, just the fact that they're gonna get the same location with the same restrictions.
Well, that's a trade-off.
They have to be vetted through the same system. We aren't, we aren't, the licensing is vetted. I, I don't see how you could, operation like Maxines or something else has got a booming business and five years from now they wanna sell it and part of their revenue is based on these machines, you've gotta write something in that says that they can sell that and have it still operational. Are we clear?
All right.
Are we clear as mud?
I think we have some direction, I think so.
Very good.
Thank you.
And lastly, would be the Economic Commission recommendations for the downtown. Do we have anything, Jim?
I'm gonna do this.
I'm gonna do the first part. The last time we reviewed this issue, we went through the short-term recommendations from the EDC, and the board indicated that they liked all of those recommendations and asked the staff to put them in place and try to get an early start on as many of those recommendations as they could. And so I thought what I would do today, first of all, is to tell you where we are in those recommendations. I'm pleased, we have been able to accomplish a number of issues, and I think that that certainly indicates to the board, the community, and the EDC how critical this report is. So let me start from the beginning on the Metro notifications about the free parking. We do have those signs up, I don't know if you've seen them around the parking lot, there's "up." In addition to that, we have advertised that free parking issue on our cable channel, our website, our Facebook, our Twitter, and our e-blast. So I think we have pretty well covered that one. The second recommendation was the sandwich signs. Tony has priced those out, they're about two hundred dollars a sign, and we'll be purchasing those and we'll be able to utilize those, I think, in the way that the EDC recommended in the spring. The third issue was the announcements using Metro's digital signs at their station. They've been very cooperative about that. I think they have a process in place where you bring to them or you call in some kind of a notification and you agree on the times, and they've been very cooperative about using that message reader board that they have. So we intend to begin using that. Relative to the cable station, the cable drop at the Metro station so that we could have the television in there with all of the community news going on, the cost of the drop is eight hundred dollars, the annual fee is seven fifty, and we have moved ahead with that, and kind of as a side benefit, that will create a Wi-Fi hotspot in our train station as well. So I think that's a spinoff benefit. We hope to get that done as soon as possible and accomplish both of those things. Relative to the holiday decor, Paul has contacted a company to provide a cost estimate for the electricity upgrade that we need for additional holiday lighting in downtown Bartlett. That'll take a little bit of time, but we've already engaged that process. Tony has been talking to Spartan Marketing. There was a recommendation, we look at utilizing them for some downtown marketing efforts. The CBAC grant, which we talked about earlier, is an annual grant, and we're trying to figure out what the cycle is and make sure that when it comes back up, we're able to apply and use that money for marketing in downtown Bartlett. And lastly, there was mess, maintenance to the station. I think that that was intended to be twofold, both exterior and interior. This evening, we have addressed, we hope at least in part, the interior maintenance. We think that that will improve, and Paul has contacted Metro regarding some of the exterior improvements. That's going to take some ongoing encouraging from us to accomplish that. So those were the items that were in the short-term report, and I'm pleased to say I think we've made significant progress or have accomplished each and every one of those. So I thought this evening what we ought to do, then moving on to the second phase of the recommendations and the third phase, was to walk through them, all of them, to get to the end, so we understand the whole realm of what's left, and talk about them, ask questions, and clearly the discussion on these will continue to another meeting, but I thought it was important that we went through each of the remaining recommendations so we know where we stand. Is that okay? Great. So in the medium-term action, six to twenty-four months, the first one is to clean up commercial buildings and yards to help make the downtown area appear more attractive to prospective businesses and patrons. I think what they're saying here is code enforcement. It's commercial buildings and yards, and certainly we can do that, and with some given direction from the board, we can step up that code enforcement. So as we move along, we'll have to keep that in mind. There was second suggestion to include the downtown business district on wayfinding signage along the bike paths. Help me out on some of these, Jim.
We can easily take our wayfinding signage that we have and put, and work with the park district and put those down in various areas where the bike paths are heavily traveled. We've seen, we've already designed that signage, you see it out throughout the various arterial roads in the village, we can easily work on identifying spots on bike paths.
That seems pretty reasonable. The third one is to market to the downtown area to a greater extent, including our trade shows, and we've talked to Tony about the ability to step up some of that marketing. Number four was to continue or expand the West Bartlett Road corridor, streetscape, trees, flowers, benches, streetlights, banners, along Oak Avenue corridor. That's a little more problematic, that was an expensive project, it took us many years, we got several federal grants, so to the extent possible, we certainly would look at doing that. They may, that may not be a, a midterm action if the board believes that that is an important thing to continue to accomplish.
That, just following up with Valerie, the one that we did on West Part of the corridor, those are matching grants, and, and that was done with the state I-DOT matching grant program, and we spent probably about three hundred thousand of the million plus that that costs. So there is that kinda trade-off on those.
Number five is to create a downtown tax increment, finance district to create a future funding source for marketing, financial support for events, and potential incentives for future businesses. That's one we're gonna have to spend some time talking about, I think. Number six is improve the traffic patterns throughout the downtown to enhance the driveability of the area and seek possible development of some existing parking lots. The first half of that, I think, is something that you have embarked on this evening with the traffic study. I think that directly addresses that, and the existing parking lot, the elimination of the parking is something that we'll have to take a look at and see if that's good for downtown Bartlett. Seven is to improve the safety of the pedestrian environment and circulation with additional crosswalks. We certainly can look at all of those. Create a cultural arts and tourism commission as a separate entity, utilizing a mix of village and private funds with the responsibility of creating and organizing events to draw area residents to the downtown business district. Someone who knows more about that will probably have to address that, but do you have any comments on that?
Well, we've got our Arts in Bartlett group. I think some of the suggestions came from representatives of that group who attended the meeting. An arts commission, or it would be, whether it would be an arts and tourism commission, it'd probably be a combination of those. You know, we've got the Heritage Days group, we've got chamber reps, we've got our Arts in Bartlett, people are very active. This would be kind of a, I would call it an umbrella commission and kinda coordinate a lot of the different things that are going in and around the downtown area, the different events, the different, and, and come up with other promotional types of events that, like a car show or something like that. But again, it's, it's a commission, has to be staffed and promoted, so I'm sure you'll wanna discuss that a little further.
Number nine is to create an art center in cooperation with the Arts in Bartlett and seek larger space for the ex... and seek larger space for the expansion of their services and any grants to support this endeavor, and we've been working with Arts in Bartlett to look at some options in an effort to accomplish that. Amend the sign code to allow for more and larger business signage. That's something that we have been talking about at a staff level, how we accomplish this, and we think that there certainly are some recommendations that we can bring to the board to do that. Eleven is to erect a larger wayfinding sign at the intersection of fifty-nine and West Bartlett Road to better direct persons in the downtown area. Certainly, an important thing to do, a lot of hurdles to get there with that kind of private property and I dot regulations, but certainly, if the EDC thinks it's important that we spend some time on that, we're willing to do that. Then we have the long-term actions, and I thought we would just walk through those as well. The first is to encourage and support private sector redevelopment of various key parcels or areas as opportunities arise in order to create additional areas for commercial and retail development. I think that's probably the most important thing that's recommended here. I think that the ability to enhance commercial in downtown Bartlett is just critical, so well put by the EDC.
And just to dovetail, this kind of came as an offshoot, as if you looked at the number five about creating the TIF district. With any TIF district, there was discussion about the redevelopment plan. Obviously, the creation of the TIF district with the redevelopment plan has to come first, and then this goal was moved into this slot, because in that redevelopment plan, it would identify some of these key parcels for redevelopment, if you were to go that route.
Number two is actually something I think I'll enjoy. Read a little Kate, the AT&T building on the corner of Main Street and Railroad Avenue to create an additional high-profile corner for commercial and retail development. We've tried that a few, a few times, and have met with the people from AT, AT&T, and said to them very specifically, what's in that building?
A lot of wires and switches.
And their answer was, a whole lot of wires. Now, I have to tell you, AT&T at the time was really very cooperative, because for those of you who remember what it looked like, it was, as I told them kindly, the ugliest building in downtown Bartlett, and if you can't get rid of it and the wires, at least make it look decent, and give us the piece on the corner, so we can turn it into some kind of a public space. They were very cooperative, and they did both of those things, so I can't be too critical of that. But as technology changes, you would assume that at some point in time, you don't need a building full of wires. But that certainly is an appropriate recommendation, and we'll look forward to seeing how that goes.
And Valerie's statement to AT&T staff was memorialized in a plaque that sits in their office in downtown Chicago.
That's not true, is it?
No, no. But it's, it was something, they were a little surprised at that statement, though.
Well, it was important to tell them the truth.
They got the point, though, because they fixed it up.
Yeah.
Can you get their wires off of our Main Street?
They didn't move the wires, but they put a lot of work into that building and, and have kept it up.
Paul, don't you have a way to, like, clip some of those wires or something?
Sure. That won't get rid of them.
We don't even get AT&T U-verse in most of this, this town, and they've got a huge building full of wires.
But I think that's an important thing to, to monitor and to check up on. Number three is to consolidate the Metro split platforms into one platform for use for all computer, commuters, computers on the mind, and I think we have said that it's time to look at that again and see if there isn't some way to make that work. Certainly, we can do that. And number four is to create a pedestrian plaza area with benches and tables, performance space that could be utilized as a community gathering spot and to host a variety of events. And if the board believes we need to spend some time on that, certainly, we'll have to start doing a site review and see where our opportunities are to accomplish that. So, a lot of good ideas and a lot of ambitious ideas.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, can the, can the Canadian money be used to enhance the commuter platforms?
What money? I didn't hear the, the first part of your question, TL, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can the, Canadian money be used to enhance the commuter platform?
Oh, the CN money?
No.
Okay. Then never mind.
Supposed to be a quiet zone, right? No pun intended. Great. That's a good question.
Is there any questions by the board, to the staff?
It's a lot of stuff, a lot of good points.
My recommendation is that we put it on another agenda, take it apart piece by piece, begin the discussion.
I think that sounds good.
Yeah, do we want to pair some, a few of them off, so we can actually have a pretty effective meeting next time, or do we want to just keep them all together?
Why don't we pair them off, and considering that they're numbered, maybe we could utilize those existing numbers? Just an idea.
I think pairing them off at risk of mixed meeting being another, a lot of information might make some sense. Does anybody want to try to take a shot at pairing a few of the six to twenty-four month agenda items off here?
Well, for just the sake of discussion, if you were the, the ones that have to do with applying for grants and those types of things, those are all based on grant cycles that we could get some further research, like if you were going to consider when these grant cycles occur, because they're all based on different, some of them are I dot grants, some of them are, are cultural art types grants, those types of things, so...
Four, five, and eight, then?
Four, five, and eight, would, we could, now, five is a TIF district creation, that's not necessarily based on a grant, but it requires us to spend some money to hire an outside consultant. So, that is, you know, whether we can get a grant for that consultant or not, you have to spend the money to hire the consultant in order to evaluate that, whether the TIF is feasible or not.
Don't we still have someone in Springfield, or that was for just grants?
Uh, the Springfield guy is more helpful on when we do make a grant application and lobbying it. The criteria for creating a TIF, you have to have your, the state requirements require an outside consultant to be hired to come and give an independent evaluation.
How long's that process usually take, if everything was...
It's a six to nine-month process.
And we, that should go first, then?
Well, if that's, you know, that's where I'm, you know, going with those types of things, if that's what you give us direction to, then you've got to go into that next stage.
I don't know that we want to jump right into a TIF at the moment here.
Well, that's...
Right. When did, when did we close the last TIF in downtown?
Been twenty-ten, as I believe.
Well, years ago.
Twenty-ten.
And that was, how long was that TIF?
That was a twenty-three-year TIF. That's, that's the standard timeframe for an initial TIF.
Those extended too, right, though?
We extended it one year to capture the remaining taxes.
Well, we could spend a whole evening talking about TIF. I mean, we could spend multiple evenings talking about TIFs.
Yeah.
Yes. That's why I was segmenting that one.
And it just seems to me, since we just closed out that TIF, I don't know how we're gonna be able to justify using a TIF program again, since we just did it, right?
We did do that, and that first TIF did a lot of good for the downtown, and it was an unusual and very unique TIF in that it was a pay-as-you-go TIF, and it was also a sales tax and an increment tax, so you had the benefit of both revenue sources to fund the redevelopment. These days, there is no longer allowed to do a sales tax TIF, so anything that's done is based on increment. So, you, you have to take that into consideration also. Your revenues generator are not going to come in as, as, as fast as that old TIF.
Right. Well, yeah, I agree. I think it's probably a little early to even consider a TIF.
Okay.
Then, that's why that one's gonna take a lot of discussion.
Okay, fine.
Okay. Let me take a crack at this. It seems to me that these things fall under three separate categories. One is cleanup and signage. So, if you look at one, two, eight, nine, and ten, those are all, let's see, that's not, eight isn't in there. One and two, signage and cleanup. Nine, or at least ten, is signage and cleanup. So, one, two, and ten, if the, if the staff could kind of group those into signage and give us some...
Eleven is a sign, too.
Eleven, yeah. So, group that in cleanup and signage.
Well, eleven's a little harder, but, yeah, I thought one, two, and ten.
Yeah. We found it in fifty-nine. And then staff work that I've already heard is being done is, is, number three, I would imagine, has already been taken place to a greater extent, including area trade shows. I'm assuming that that's an ongoing event for you, Jim? Is that right?
Tony goes and markets the downtown and goes to the trade shows, yes.
Is the EDC just suggesting that we pump a little more into that, or...
I think that's part of the, part of it was to make, continue putting money into marketing it and to, and expand it.
I think six and seven are, are relevant to the pending traffic study, so the improved traffic patterns and improved safety for pedestrians, those are going to be somewhat dependent on what we find out in three to six months, right? So, we can push those off into the traffic study area.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, the, the number four was actually up in cleanup and signage, too. So, expand West Bartlett along the similar lines of Oak Avenue. I'm sure the board would want to hear, you know, some possible... No?
Four is one of those grant cycle-type things that's gonna be very expensive, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And it's a local share.
Local share.
So, I think we need to really be sure that we want to spend that kind of money.
That would be, as Paul points out, a capital budget type of item that we would have to commit.
Can, can we put that into the category of finding out a ballpark dollar amount? So, at least we have some kind of a start there?
We can, absolutely.
Like a ballpark dollar amount that we can discuss during our planning session?
Yes, we can.
That's my crack. That'll get, that should take up some time next time.
Okay. Nothing else? That would conclude all I have.
Can we find out how much three would cost on long-term? Not necessarily.
And maybe, I guess, in number three, Jim, just in the next committee meeting, maybe we could give us an idea of how much more we could get involved?
Yeah, we can, we use, I think we budget twenty thousand for marketing the whole village in, so I don't know how much of that's downtown, but we'll get the number on that.
I'm, I'm sorry, that was long-term. Not number three, medium-term?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, how much, how much would that be?
Oh, the split platform?
Yeah.
But I have to get an engineer and look at it very carefully and, and put some numbers to it. I wouldn't want to hazard a guess.
I think that, I think that ball's already rolling, isn't it? Didn't we get that moving a little bit as far as trying to find out what's involved in Metra's?
We talked to them.
So, we got some movement on that already.
Yeah.
So, we'll, I'm assuming we'll get some updates after a while. That's your conclusion, Mr. Chairman Cameron? All right, if there's nothing else.
Thank you.
For the good of the order, I will adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Trusty Cameron, moved by Trusty Ranky, and clerk please call the roll.
Trusty Erans?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.